... 600 today. Hundreds of thousands.
Okay, so this town has called to order the Southern Central District Board of Education meeting Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. As per reflected, all board members are present. At this time, Chair, I intend to motion to go into executive session for the purposes of: One, review with the town assessor and attorney for the Board of Education. Legal issues pertaining to various tax proceedings. Here, we view with attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to federal partners' tax proceeding. Review with attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to executive associates, no one for tax proceeding. Four, review with the superintendent of schools and attorney for the Board of Education issues pertaining to coaching position. Five, review with the attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to vetoed collection of taxes. Six, review with the attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to vetoed award system bill. Seven, review with the attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to recently filed notice of claim. And eight, discussing superintendent of schools employment agreement. Sorry.
Comment.
Thank you, Teresa. Teresa?
Yes.
All of the parents have a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pros, detentions, units, thank you.
You got a pen?
Yeah, it wasn't really working. Do you need pens? I have pens. You guys? Alright, welcome. So I had a delay. We had a lot of discussions upstairs. This has had to be conducted. And what happened, so I apologize. But now that we're here, let's get started. So, at this time, I'll recall to order the Southern Central School District Board of Education meeting Tuesday, January 9th. As same prior, as per reflected, all board members are present. If we could all please stand for the public's reasons. Chief, if you would.
In the United States of America, in this republic which stands for nation under God, indivisible, and the religion of this world.
Okay, next slide on 1.07 is the student report. Welcome.
Good evening. Everyone had a good year. Sure it's going on at the high school. This week is the beginning of Southern High School's cultural month. This month, we celebrate different cultures at the high school by having cultural fairs during lunch, during lunch in the gym. This year's cultural fairs will be held on the 11th and the 25th. And the fairs are fun they have. They just highlight all the different foods and music and athletics in the different countries that are represented in the high school. On Thursday, the 11th, is this, this Thursday, the 11th, is the second winter concert. Thursday, January 18th, is the college fair during lunch. From January 22nd to 25th is the mid-year regis are being held. On Thursday, January 25th, there will be the Southern High School College Night and the snow day is January 31st. Friday, January 26th, is the end of the second quarter at the high school. January 30th is the eighth grade parent night. And finally, February 1st is the third and final winter concert. That's all, this is the meeting I think everyone's agreed on.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, 1.08, I'm in the regular meeting on December 5th, 2017. Chair, I intend to motion to accept those as so stated. Clark?
I will abstain.
Okay, Teresa?
Second.
Matt? Any discussion? All of the parents have a saying aye?
Aye.
And Matt, right? And one objection? 1.01, are there superintendents coming?
No.
Okay, 1.10, this is poll participation as to action item ability, those are the items behind me. 2.01 through 2.22. The session will not last longer than 30 minutes. If you have any comments, we respect any of those items behind me. Please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, address, whatever remarks you have to the board. And again, I caution you, with respect to policies, 1230, 1430, 240, refrain from making comments regarding any district personnel or student. Say none? Okay, say none opposed. None, yes? Okay. Okay, I close that portion of the meeting, 1.10. With respect to action items, just with respect to 2.06, want to poll 2.06. Apparently messed that one up and didn't do it appropriately. So, unfortunately, we have to poll 2.06 for next meeting, for the next meeting. That being said, I would like to use a consent agenda for the balance of the 2.01 through 2.05, 2.07 through 2.22. Any objection? I wasn't asked to poll anything, anything, so mine.
Well, I have a question upstairs, so I'll get off after this. So, I am, uh, the informant, I mean, so 2.02 to 2.06.
Can you, what do you, what would you like to do?
Uh, I have a question.
I'm sorry, 6 was closed.
Wait, so you would only, you would only, okay, just part of a question. Just been public caution on what? Yes, not, okay.
So with respect to 2.01 and then 2.07 through 2.22, Angela, not to make it any more confusing. Chair, I intend to motion to accept those as so stated.
I'll make that.
Clark?
Second.
Who is that?
Paul.
Here. I have my sunglasses on, but this people pick up here.
There you go. Any discussion? So, I know what you, just on 1, just on 2.01, 2.07 through 2.22. Okay. No discussion? All of the parents have a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Detentions? Yes.
Okay, with respect to 2.0 through 2.05, is it, is it collective?
Yes, collective, general question, not regarding individuals specifically. I recall we approved and voted on similar agreements in our October 17, 2017 meeting.
Right.
And I wasn't sure why we didn't do those collectively with them, especially since they date back to July 1st. So we're kind of six months late, so.
The four agreements had different end times and one of the goals this year with the individual contracts was to try to get them all to end on the same day of the year, not necessarily the same year. So these four ended up being changed so that they end on June 30th. These four individuals, one was hired in January, one was in May, July, and August. So we wanted to make sure that the end date was a June 30th date and that the end date occurred prior to the end of their probationary period. And because some of these were employed less than two years, there's a different contribution rate and perhaps in the first edit that was not captured. And so there were multiple edits to these four agreements.
So if I understand correctly, moving forward, they would expire together with everyone else and they would be renewed for a July 1st date?
They will expire on a June 30th, but depending on when they were hired, it could be 2019, it could be 2021.
Right. So the years will vary, but we'll always approve them the same time of the year.
Yes, yes.
Were these discussed, some of them were posted late, so were they all discussed in the fall discussions or were any of them?
Yes, with the table of prior salary and proposed salary, they were all part of that.
And there were no changes to employee?
No, no changes at all.
So some of them, some of them did receive raises even though it's a partial year?
The raise would be effective from July 1 forward.
Retroactively or next July?
Retroactively to July 1.
Thank you for that comment. Okay, so 2.0 through 2.05, Chair, I intend to motion to accept those as so stated. Clark? Oh, Teresa?
Second.
Second, Clark? Any discussion, further discussion? All of the parents have a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Detentions?
Yes.
Moving forward, I really would like to make a request that instead of retroactively making these changes, that we adjust our times or our votes to be prior to and not after the fact.
And I think that was the intent.
And that would make it a lot more clear and have a better opportunity to ask questions, not after, you know, if I've been waiting for this, just also not there to our employees to wait. Thank you. Alright, so administrative reports, 3.01. Greetings.
Hello, yeah. Well, thanks everyone for coming out for this presentation. It's all about this. Yeah, yeah.
So we just wanted to take some time to talk about all the communications efforts that have been going on in the district over the last year and a half as we've kind of built it up. So this will be a brief kind of presentation of the past year, last year, and what we've got going so far this year. Basically, you know, communication is essential to creating partnerships within the district with families, students, with the community in general, and that's never been more important than it is now. So we've really kind of put a lot, a lot of time and effort into building this program up to make sure that we're reaching our target audience. But let's talk a little bit about the initiatives of the communications program. Basically, we're here to promote the district as the premier school district in Rockland County, showcase our students and staff and programs, you know, to showcase that, utilize and expand our efforts to reach all community members as that changes and grows, and communicate our district-wide initiatives to external audiences, not just in our district, but outside of our district to kind of promote this area as a place to promote a common life. In the 16, 17 school year, our social media outreach grew consistently, we gained users, and we increased the amount of coverage that was done by the media, journal news and some television outlets as well. We looked at new avenues of communication and strategies and outreach, and we came home with a couple of state and national recognition awards for our communications efforts. I'm going to go into that a little bit. We had about six or seven major stories in the journal news last year, feature stories, news briefs, and roundups. Two really big ones that came out of, you know, just kind of cultivating relationships with the journalists were the Cougar Chronicles, our Major Space, the SEM Expo, and a couple of others as well. We are constantly being recognized for all of our sports teams, having quite a few scholar athletes last year. And this is just looking at last year, so we jumped significantly in our Facebook followers and our Twitter followers. We launched a couple of new campaigns that were highly successful, we're going to go into a little more detail about some of them, one of them being the Mountie Superstar. We promoted our non-resident tuition program, and we launched videos. We have a consistent and clear presence on social media every day. Our Mountie Superstar campaign, which we launched in January 2017, received a New York State Public Relations Association Achievement Award. We featured 18 different teachers, staff, and personnel from Southern Central last year, as Rockland Central at the time. And this, this program really, really boosted the interaction amongst our community and our teachers and the staff, especially on social media. It built a lot of external awareness as to people that might be doing things in the buildings in the district that parents might not know. And also internally, it helped support some morale and pride for the district and for working here. So this is continuing, it's growing, and we also launched a video campaign. So they say that, sorry, they say that 80, online videos account for, will account for more than 80% of internet traffic by the year 2020, and that over 8 billion videos or 100 million hours of video are watched on Facebook daily. So we continued to that this year, and we launched a whole video campaign on our 21st century learning programs. And we did a complete district-wide video and then seven videos for the different schools. So not only did we highlight the district as a whole, but we took each individual school and highlighted what made it unique and what they were doing. And if you haven't seen them, we have a YouTube channel, you can link to them from our website. They were really, really fantastic. We also produced a SEM Expo video, which got over 70,000 views, really kind of showcasing the program and our partnership with the Reach Foundation. We won two awards. The National School Public Relations Association gave us an award of merit, and the NICE also gave us the award of excellence for this program. Our newsletters continued, we had three issues. Our fall issue really highlighted our tuition-based program, and, you know, we have a budget issue every year, and our summer issue talks about highlights and achievements of the year. We want a mention from the National School Public Relations Association for that, for this campaign as well. Other things we did last year that were new, we launched a superintendent's task force. It was a way for us to partner with community members, so we had the mayors from the different towns and villages, some local business owners and realtors come together and learn about the district so that they could be stewards for the district and that we could help in any way that we could to try and attract new families to the area. We participated for the first time in the Southern Street Fair, that was really, really well-received last spring. We had a lot of teachers volunteer their time and students volunteer their time of the day showcasing a lot of our programs and offerings. We had the Mountie, the Mountie walking up and down the street, it was really fun. So, and then we also, you know, we listed SEM Expo with Reach Foundation, but we actually tabled, we had a table this year, so we were able to kind of promote, promoted our new prepay program and our videos. And then the deputy superintendent and I spent a lot of time, not a lot of time, but we went to a couple of different meetings with different realtors, the White Guard and the other ones, just to kind of talk about what they were seeing in terms of people moving in and moving out, and what they were hearing, and how we could help. And so a lot, you know, we, we started a partnership with them where we give them our Excelure magazines and, you know, provide them with information they need. And then we sat on, the strategic planning committee was in its second year, so we worked a lot with the communications and support committee, working on measurable objectives and goals, which were highlighted in the upcoming, or the Excelure that just came out. But it's not what we do once in a while that shakes our lives or in this case, our district, it's what we do consistently. So we continue into this year with consistent push in all of those areas, starting with the launch of our new school district named Southern Central. With the governor's final approval before the start of the school year, we were able to put together a campaign that we controlled 100% by working with the media, by providing the message that we wanted to be told, and it was really well-received from a cover story in the journal news, stories in both local news outlets, TV news outlets, Rockland County Times. We launched a welcome back video that we had shot, you know, back in the spring, you know, with the hopes of, it was going to change. And we went with a lot of community outreach as well, and we launched a new website. This was a huge, huge, huge endeavor and feat for the, for this department because we went from a site that was static and non-responsive to the old one, to our new site, which is mobile-friendly. We are finding a lot more people use our websites, use our website and information from their mobile device, and they are able to very easily now find the things they're looking for, which are basically luncheon, the lunch menu, staff directory, which we rebuilt and is searchable, and, you know, other things like the e-school data. So on the website, we have our Twitter feed, and we, we post new content daily based on all of our social media, so it's always fresh and new content that's appearing, change the pictures. It's very visually stimulating and a lot less text, which is what we wanted. There is a national initiative for all websites in education to be APA compliant. We are working diligently to get up and running. We are pretty much there. When we build this new site, we get that in mind. You can actually, at the top of the menu, the very top menu of the new site, there's a language, it runs in Google language, and you can translate into probably 50 different languages, any language you want. And it will actually translate the Twitter feed and the news announcements as well. So this is really great for all our families that speak a different language. Some other new initiatives this year, we launched Instagram, and we did this because we wanted to reach the students too. We know that they're not on Facebook, and Twitter is, you know, oftentimes it moves pretty fast. So Instagram is where they are living, and we have, when I did this presentation last week, we had 380 followers, as of tonight, we have 402. So it keeps growing. We've been interacting a lot with the high school club, the high school organizations that have these Instagram accounts, yours and Cool Kids, USO, World Language Department. So that is very photo-friendly social media, it's not a lot of content, it's more pictures. So when we're in the buildings, I'll snap photos of the different art projects and post them just so people can see what's going on. We also launched this year the superintendent's blog, which is a way for us to kind of interact from Dr. Adams, to interact with the community and promote the programs and operations that are going on in this school from his point of view. And it's been pretty successful so far, we've done six, we've got two coming up, one on the middle school technology, and we're talking about one on all the concerts that are coming, that are happening in the next couple of weeks. So that list on the website, it's posted out through social media as well. West Rockland Collaborative System, another organization we met with this year, they're a local group of nonprofits, and really we're hoping to parlay that to some of the buildings because it's more of a, they can work with our different students, especially in the high school. And we also launched this year, this fall Peach Star, which is a digital flyer camp program. So now, instead of parents having to hunt and peck for the backpack, they get an email anytime a flyer is uploaded, then they can opt out if they don't want that. Our Facebook and Twitter accounts continue to grow. We have a couple of other journal news stories, one on the garden in Viola, and our fall Excelure featured stories relating to the strategic plan. So not only did we share last year's goals and objectives, now we're sharing ways in which we're actually working towards that. And I just want to say briefly that Southern Central is ahead of every other district in Rockland County, not only in social media, which they are, we're the only district that has a district Instagram account, but we are one of few districts that actually have a Twitter account. You know, the superintendent sometimes do, and teachers sometimes do, but we have a district one as well, in which we're able to share a lot of the stuff that goes on in the buildings. And we have the most followers on our Facebook page of any of the districts in Rockland County. So the second closest one is North Rockland with 2041, and then Clarkstown with 1790. So we also were kind of the spearhead, the leader in these videos, and, you know, working, as I work with Bosse's, we see and know what's going on in a lot of the other districts, and everybody else is chasing us with video now, so it's pretty exciting. Moving forward, so we're working on expanding our video initiative. We just finished shooting, I was hoping I'd be able to have a sneak peek tonight, but it's not quite ready. We just finished shooting a whole bunch of athletic, a lot of fall and winter sports, and we're cutting together a video about the athletic program here at the district. We're also working on the video around the music program and the art program, and we're working with the social studies department because they've launched a K through Fall mission in social studies, so by the end of the year, we'll have a video about that as well. Continuing content with the blog, focusing on the district and building feature stories, and also taking a look beyond the Mountie, the Mountie pride, on how we can recognize other staff for their efforts in the district, as well as volunteers that take their time, that, you know, put their time forth. And we're also targeting communications to new and potential district residents, and that, you know, that includes people that might be moving in, non-tuition-based, you know, tuition-based, non-residents, and also families that are not English as first language speaking. We've identified that as something that we're really going to take a look at as we move into the spring, and how we can reach those families. And, you know, supporting the growth of our prepay program, that's a big initiative as well. So that's kind of my report, and then just I wanted to bring up Scott Salado, he's the director of communications for Rockland Bosse's. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, Scott Salado, communications director of Bosse's, and thank you to the board for inviting us tonight, and Superintendent Adams. And I just wanted to recognize our Rockland Bosse's board member that links us to you here in Southern Central, Sandy Jenna. Thank you for coming out tonight to support us. Thank you so much. We want to take quick moments to reemphasize everything Jenny said. Jenny's doing an amazing job, and we're so proud of Bosse's, of the job she's doing here for this year. And to let you know that she's backed up by an entire team. So when Jenny puts together the Excelure, or when she's working on graphics, or when she's doing website updates, she has the resources of an entire team at Bosse's. So she has myself, graphic design, strategic communications expert, and two other folks with a staff of six, both on people, so we're talking, professional photographer, video crew, we're going to start using a drone this year with some of her videography, that's kind of exciting. So behind Jenny, and when she is here in the district, embedded in the district, a team is backing her up. So we're using the latest in Adobe graphic design work, we're using all the greatest and latest tools, and we want to make certain that your message is strategically delivered, your programs are marketed, your audience hears us, the students, the families, the staff, your parent population, the business community. So we take this very seriously. You are ahead of other districts in using social media and video, groundbreaking. Bosse's is the only other entity in the county that has Instagram. There is one or two districts that don't have any social media in the county, and they're behind because if you don't have Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, Snapchat in 2018, I could probably say something's not right. So you are head, and these are the things we are. So I'm talking about a school district. Well, it's serious for us because that is where, this is a true story, this is something that is a figure and it's a fact. In Rockland County today, if you're male or female, between the ages of 18 and 37, the first place you check in the morning is your Facebook page.
Because they be careful with the age thing.
And when you brought it down a little bit more to 54, it's the, the... and post them just so people can see what's going on. We also launched this year the superintendent's blog, which is a way for us to kind of interact from Dr. Adams to interact with the community and promote the programs and operations that are going on in this school from his point of view. And it's been pretty successful so far. We've done six. We've got two coming up, one on the middle school technology. And we're talking about one on all the concerts that are coming, that are happening in the next couple of weeks. So that list on the website is posted out through social media as well. West Rim Rainbow Club is just another organization we met with this year. They're a local group of nonprofits. And really, we're hoping to parlay that to some of the buildings because it's more of a, they can work with our different students, especially in the high school. And we also launched this year this fall Peach Star, which is a digital flyer camp program. So now instead of parents having to hunt and peck for the backpack, they get an email anytime a flyer is uploaded. Then they can opt out if they don't want that. Our Facebook and Twitter accounts continue to grow. We have a couple of other journal news stories, one on the garden in Viola. And our fall Excelsior featured stories relating to the strategic plan. So not only did we share our shared goals and objectives, now we're sharing ways in which we're actually working towards that. And I just want to say briefly that Suffering Central is ahead of every other district in Rockland County, not only in social media, which they are, we're the only district that has a district Instagram account. But we are one of few districts that actually have a Twitter account. You know, the superintendents sometimes do and teachers sometimes do, but we have a district one as well, in which we're able to share a lot of the stuff that goes on in the buildings. And we have the most followers on our Facebook page of any of the districts in Rockland County. So the second closest one is North Rockland with 2041 and then Clarkstown with 1790. So we also are kind of the spearhead, the leader in these videos. And, you know, working, as I work with Bosse's, we see and know what's going on in a lot of the other districts. And everybody else is chasing us with video now, so it's pretty exciting. Moving forward, so we're working on expanding our video initiative. We just finished shooting. I was hoping I'd be able to have a sneak peek tonight because it's not quite ready. We just finished shooting a whole bunch of athletic, a lot of fall and winter sports. And we're cutting together a video about the athletic program here at the district. We're also working on the video around the music program and the art program. And we're working with the social studies department because they've launched a K through Fall mission in social studies. So by the end of the year, we'll have a video about that as well. Continuing content with the blog, focusing on the district and building feature stories. And also taking a look beyond the Mountie Pride, on how we can recognize other staff for their efforts in the district, as well as volunteers that take their time, that, you know, put their time forth. And we're also targeting communications to new and potential district residents. And that, you know, that includes people that might be moving in, tuition-based, non-residents, and also families that are not English as first language speaking. We've identified that as something that we're really going to take a look at as we move into the spring, how we can reach those families. And, you know, supporting the growth of our pre- paid program is a big initiative as well. So that's kind of my report. And then just I wanted to bring up Scott Salado, he's the director of communications for Rockland Bosse's. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, Scott Salado, communications director of Bosse's. And thank you to the board for inviting us tonight and Superintendent Adams. And I just wanted to recognize our Rockland Bosse's board member that links us to you here in Suffering Central, Sandy Jenna. Thank you for coming out tonight to support us. Thank you so much. I want to take quick moments to reemphasize everything Jenny said. Jenny's doing an amazing job and we're so proud of Bosse's of the job she's doing here for the district. And to let you know that she's backed up by an entire team. So when Jenny puts together the Excel series or when she's working on graphics or when she's doing website updates, she has the resources of an entire team at Bosse's. So she has myself, graphic design, strategic communications expert, and two other folks with a staff of six full-time people. So we're talking professional photographer, video crew. We're going to start using a drone this year with some photography. That's kind of exciting. So behind Jenny and when she is here in the district, embedded in the district, a team is backing her up. So we're using the latest in Adobe graphic design work. We're using all the greatest and latest tools. And we want to make certain that your message is strategically delivered, your programs are marketed, your audience hears us, the students, the families, the staff, your parent population, the business community. So we take this very seriously. You are ahead of other districts in using social media and video, groundbreaking. Bosse's is the only other entity in the county that has Instagram. There is one or two districts that don't have any social media in the county. And they're behind because if you don't have Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, Snapchat in 2018, I could probably say something's not right. So you are ahead. And these are the things we are. So I'm talking about a school district. Well, it's serious for us because that is where, this is a true story. This is something that is a figure and it's a fact. In Rockland County today, if you're male or female, between the ages of 18 and 37, the first place you check in the morning is your Facebook page.
Because they be careful with the age thing.
And when you brought it down a little bit more to 54, it's the actual numbers skew a little bit differently. But still, the first thing people check in the morning is their Facebook. Not the journal news, not News 12, not the Today Show, it's their Facebook. So when Jenny's on late at night pushing that message this early morning, it's to make certain that the first thing they see in the morning is the Suffering Central. So I'm here tonight just in support of Jenny to let you know that a team is backing her up. We're proud to do it. We're so thrilled to be a part of your family. And if there's any questions, please.
He does do the Facebook posts like 10:30 right? And I'm like, who is writing a 10:30 post on, I mean, outside of Maryland?
I am watching, watching.
I just had a quick question. So you just made me think of something. So there's like a group called Suffering High School Friends. I know it's a close, when I'm looking at as a closed group, but do we push any of this? Because sometimes our alum want to stay involved or they might know somebody or they might still live here or just want to stay connected. And that could help even the reputation of the district if they know people that are still connected or in the area, so.
Yeah, I mean, we hope that people that want to stay connected are following our Facebook page. I have, there's, you know, the PCA is really great partners to have. And that's another initiative that I want to look at in the winter next year is like helping grow that relationship. But usually, there's a couple of pages on Facebook that always share the stuff that we share. So there's the Suffering Central School District Support Schools page, which is pretty well used.
I'm talking about alum.
Alum, I think it's not something that, you know, we're pushing, but.
I'm just saying, I don't, you know, that's like 3.7.
We're using private, a lot of private groups.
That's the thing, like the other thing is, I'm also a parent in this district. So that I post on the pages that I, but if you would like to share the stuff on the alumni page, we bring.
Instagram and some of the, you know.
Yeah, yeah. So we've been trying to share just that we have that, you know, this is one of the things, but definitely some of you will pay attention to.
Go to the record room.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to say, as somebody that follows the district on all Viva, the amount of coverage that you've put on in the last year has increased dramatically. And the content is really improved and it's interesting and it's knowledgeable and it's what everybody wants to see and it's what I would like everybody who's looking at those pages to see. I just think that, I mean, really just a great job. It's just, everything's really gone great and keep going.
So I'll keep the praise to the end. I'll start with questions. There's definitely a lot of praise. I totally agree. I just want to, first housekeeping question, did we repair that link for community members? Do you need all board members for that? Now you can just click on it and it'll go there. I just make sure that happens. I requested that a couple of years, three years ago. And perhaps now it's possible with our new setup that board members have the option to sign into notifications once our kids have graduated and we're no longer active parents or past parents. So if we can get notifications, it would be very helpful for us to know.
Notifications from?
So either from the Peach site, when things get posted. I mean, it should be an option. Some board members may not want to get them. But for example, for me to know if we have a delayed opening or snow day, I have to log into the site and look for the announcement. Other than that, I'd like to be informed. And other things, you know, power outage, something quick.
So usually, so that's a good point. Our communications chain for when there's a snow day is that there's the Connect Dad, which is not me. There, I post on the website immediately an alert and on our Facebook and Twitter feeds immediately.
So those alerts can be generated automatically?
Yes. When you log onto the Suffering Central dot, or the alert will pop up. It's not, I don't send it through Peach Star. Peach Star is not, that's an opportunity for community groups and PTAs to share events and activities that are happening. And you actually don't have to have an account for that either. You can access all of that straight from the website as well.
How about the, Dr. Adams, we had requested if we could sign into the Connect Dad email.
I'd love to check into that.
Yeah. At one point, they were told not to sign, but we're working on it. I would love to be able to be informed. So what is the appropriateness or possibility of participating in some of these fairs actually out of Suffering? Or we would like to market our district to outside Suffering fans?
Might not be too hard to do.
I mean, I don't know, what's the, you know, I know that merchants can publicize or, you know, market their products.
That's something that we can look into. I know that a lot of these fairs have costs associated, so we have to.
That's my question. Is it legally possible? Is it something totally out of Suffering?
Yes, legally possible.
Yes. Yes, we would like to reach out to our communities to bring more people into our schools, so.
I look, we could launch a, you know, $100,000 marketing campaign for Suffering Central School District and, you know, and market Hoboken and this Manhattan and all these places where these young people are looking to.
But it says now is the table at fair though, that it may not be over that.
Absolutely, you know, it's, yeah, it's definitely possible. And the question is, do we have the, you know, we don't have a lot of them.
Definitely. And I would note was that the advocacy committee at its last meeting had exchanged ideas about Excelsior or other ways of communicating with parents, specifically as you mentioned, towards the end, parents who are not English speakers, but also to all parents regarding important items such as cyber safety, bullying, safety in general. And so we would like to, we have forwarded the acknowledgement of the board presence of the nation to our superintendent. We'd like to maybe, my colleagues, Mr. Darnley and Mr. Turner and myself, maybe deal with your own points and exchange, portal communicate some of these ideas that came up. That, we don't know how much of it is feasible or doable, but we need your input.
That's definitely another initiative that I want to, not just reporting on the news that's going on in the district, but also some of the issues that parents need to be aware of. The school right now is working on a couple of things regarding issues that are going on, you know, with kids. And, you know, anytime they have an assembly or anything like that, I'll report on it, but it would be definitely helpful, I think, for parents to just get third-party information about different things.
Or where to go or links, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Also on our website, not just in the newsletter. And one of the things that got thrown in that meeting that we'd like to discuss is, is there a video of how Excelsior in Spanish, for example, distributed to parents? I mean, what we talk and what it is.
Yeah, 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 yes. So this issue, we didn't print any in Spanish, but if you go on the website, every article is actually listed in Spanish and English. So.
We want to make sure that those families are aware, to make sure they look for it, et cetera. So whenever you have a chance, it would be great if we can meet with you and this.
Thank you.
And a big rah rah, because you've done so much in such a short time. And we're very proud of our presence on the internet and in printed material and local papers. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
We have 3.02 benefits. This is my story, if you would.
Good evening. While Jenny was speaking, I signed on to Instagram, so now our followers are reported. Wrong report, it's not mine. There we go. So this is annually, ooh. The annual we go through as far as starting our budget process and look at what's going on now, but also some of the things that we find out for next year. And the first thing we usually look at is employee benefits. So basically, for ERS, the rates are slightly lower. They really haven't changed that much at all. But for five years in a row, now they're slightly lower. ERS, TRS, I'm sorry, is projected to be 10.5 to 11. It's at 9.8 right now. And the health insurance rates continue to go up next year between 8 and 9 percent. This is just to show you sort of the historical rates and how they change with teachers' retirement. You know, a few years ago, we had a lot of budget issues because the rates went way up. And actually, for a couple of years, we were actually able to use that as part of our tax gap limitation. We were actually, so it was more than a 2% increase. We were able to use that for that calculation and raise that through taxes. And as you can see, it could be very volatile. And these are large numbers for us. So this really has a big impact on our budget. And this shows the actual expense in 1819. I estimated, but we have no updated salaries at this point. So this is a very, very, very early estimate. It's based on the salaries we have in place on that. So you can see that if all salaries remained the same, the benefits would still be increasing next year. But not as bad, as you can see, we had a high of 1415 of over $8 million. As far as employees' retirement is concerned, also, like I said, it barely changed over the last few years, but it has been decreasing, as you can see. Of course, this doesn't have the impact on our budget that the teachers' retirement system does because, of course, we have a lot less than employees' salaries than we have the teachers' salaries. And to show you, but even though the rate is going down, assuming we're going to have some sort of, you know, increase, we do have some employment contracts in place, or all of them are down. You can see that our TRS actions are increased dollar-wise, but not by a lot of money. Again, it's just not having an impact on the budget. What always has a very, very large impact on the budget is our health insurance. As you can see, projected with that 8 to 9% projection, we're talking about staff expenses between 17, 8 going up to 19, 2. That's a very, very large part of our budget. Last year, we had about the same sort of increase, over $1,500,000. The year before, $1,503,000. We're talking about a lot of money and it doesn't seem to be changing anytime too soon. So that's something as we go forward, we're going to have to look for. These are very large salary benefits as part of that budget. You've got to remember, when people retire, maybe we're saving some money on their salaries because we might be hiring somebody at a low rate, but we're still paying their other benefits at 100% now to actually increase the cost for the retiree. And now we add a person, now we have the initial cost of the health benefit. So this is just the part of people. And we've shown this over the years how our retirees and our active employees, there's really not that much of a difference between the number of active employees and the number of retirees. As far as the budget concerns, and this is again very preliminary because we don't have the actual salary, the goal of the salary. We have a each retirement increase of 150. Employees' retirements are insignificant, but the health insurance would be $1,500,000. That was big numbers. And this is just to show you how much money the district is paying per person based on the 15% contribution, which most people will be out. Everyone will be out at the end of the contract except for the people that are getting hired. But you could see that an individual costs this district over $10,000. A family costs this district $24,000. Big, big impact on the budget. And of course, these are our retirees and it's based on whether they're Medicare or not Medicare. And we also, as part of the New York State Plan, we reimburse our retirees and their spouses for Medicare. So if they're in money through Social Security, if they're on Medicare, for those benefits, we reimburse those to the 1,600 dollars. And I just want to show you basically real dollars per person because sometimes that million five is just a huge number and it's hard to really think about. But look, that individual has gone up over 7%. Family over 8%, et cetera. So a lot of money this district is contributing to benefits for our employees, especially in health. I always tell them good news, don't I? Just a brief overview of what's going on here so that when we start this budget process, you realize we're already behind people. Here are benefits, we've got health insurance and everything is ready. Billings are talking about over $1,000,000. It's a, between TRS and health benefits without any change of that. Do we have any questions?
Do you mind clarifying about the one family, one family?
That means it's a married couple, one person's on Medicare and one isn't?
So if it's a married couple, we're not Medicare, it's still the one? Is that why they're both on Medicare?
That's why it's both. So if you're both on Medicare, Medicare becomes your primary, even though we're reimbursing the $1,600, we're still paying only $14,000 versus $21,000.
Individual if they're not, if they don't have a spouse. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is an introduction to the employee benefits. And just a couple of points with the healthcare costs, please remember that it's a calendar year basis. So that kicked in January 1. So when we go through the budget this spring, it's part art, part science. The science part is we know the numbers. The art part is we're, we had the new rates beginning January 1 of this year, but it's for the 1617 budget, 1718 budget. What we're going to be talking about in the spring is the following year's budget, where only half of it from July 1 to December is covered. So we do our best estimate on that. And then Teresa at the bottom of the TRS especially had put in red that this is based upon current salaries. So we haven't rolled over the salaries. The salaries are approximately $1 million. We're looking at a 10 and 1/2 to 11% increase. That's an additional $110,000 on top of the 150 that we're estimating right now. So I'm just, we'll go through this as we march through the budget process, which you approved tonight. Our first budget workshop will be in February instead of in March, so that we protract this for two and a half months to give you a chance to digest it. A lot of information and we're just going to continue to make sure that you and our community is informed about it.
Thank you.
Because I haven't had enough.
Oh wait. Oh wait, it's hard.
Lucky today.
Are we on mid-year?
We're on mid-year expenditures.
Well, thank you for that. Oh, more to two now? Why don't you hit us with 3.03?
I will.
It's a spreadsheet. There we are.
It's small.
It's very small, I'm sorry.
Can we read that bigger?
There we go. Making the numbers.
No, my glasses are on the side.
Okay, so basically, every year we go through this through December, which is mid-year for us. Although because our expenditures, most of them are in 10 months, it's a little bit different for us. Because really through December, most of our, we've only had four months of our main expenditures. Obviously, we have expenditures in the summer, but we don't have salaries. We don't have a lot of Bosse's costs. So then there's the other six months. But this shows us, that's why a lot of the stuff that we do after this or after that, because we really, for us, the majority of the expenditures after January will be after. So just going through and looking year to year, there's nothing in the revenue, the only couple of things I wanted to point out was our tuition and health services, which is down this year for 1718. And that's mainly to one of the private schools closed in our district and we will provide a health service for them and they're rebuilding it to other districts because most of the students did reside outside of our district. So that's why it's lower this year. Other thing I wanted to point out is state aid. So there's that. State aid seems a lot low, but it's really an accounting entry because what happens with teachers' retirement is they don't, we don't actually pay a bill. What happens is the state says, this is how much your teacher's retirement is and that's how much less state aid we're going to give you. Well, this year, teacher's retirement is about $600,000 higher, so that's less state aid we're going to get. So what we record on the books is how much of the expense is there, how much of the state aid. So the difference between the 11, 265 and the 10, 589 is just that teacher's retirement portion of state aid that we got, like one year versus the other. That's all I want to say about the revenues. Because you see in total revenues as a percentage of, basically, the same. As we go down to the expenditures, what I want to point out is salaries and benefits is if you remember when we were doing the budget this year, we used to. we used to, we have two point one million in a fund balance, which we use to fund our summer expenses. So usually, we would add that to our salaries and benefits. But this year, what we decided to do, and in the current budget, seventeen eighteen, was we actually moved that to the other line, which is why the other line went from six point to two point, I'm sorry, five point five. So you realize, even though it seems like it's a different percentage, it's basically because of, again, an accounting change.
Can you clarify that, Theresa, which line did it move to?
Carrie, come down to other.
Okay, so the salaries and benefits, which we usually used to keep this two point one in salaries and benefits, we moved it to another column, so it's gonna be clearer as we go through budget process. Here we're just showing the basic summary. So that's why these percentages seem like they're a little bit higher. We spent like the thirty six, thirty versus the thirty five, the forty two versus the thirty nine.
So you took it out of other and put it where?
Other way around.
But isn't the percentage looking like smaller than previous year in other?
Well, I moved that to that, because it's a larger number. But the thirty six percent salary. Thirty six percent salary, but most of it was in benefits. So you see the forty two percent versus the thirty nine percent. The other thing I wanna point out is BOSI's, and that's because we lowered some of our BOSI's costs by moving some of our, we have a physical therapist on staff now. We also moved the classrooms to Cherry Lane and, and, and school. I know we just spoke about it, I believe it was the last meeting. The other line, that's my, the buildings and grounds, that's a bit lower. We've been doing a very large, I'm sure you're all aware, and we'll talk about security at some point, of the doors and locks project. And that's starting to come to an end, it's wiping down, so we didn't have as much expense this year so far as we had in prior years.
We still have roofs and everything else.
I'm sorry?
We still have the roofs.
Yes, what I'm saying, but that project was just part of the regular building maintenance project, so it's something that we're gonna do project, the capital project. It's part of some of our. The regular repairs.
While that's come down, you still budgeted half a million dollars more this year for buildings and ground, you probably.
Yes, because we budgeted, I believe, seven hundred thousand dollars. Absolutely. But I'm just trying to point out, like, what I'm trying to say is at this point, that's basically what the big difference is. That's where we set the money this year, that was last year, I'm sorry, the other year. And then to go to other, that's what I was talking about before, the two point one million is now in there, which makes us a higher budget. And the expenditures are higher this year because we had before, remember, if you remember, last year we set up an employee benefits reserve, a couple of reserves for employees. So what we do now is, we used to put money away for the retirement incentive, for an annual basis, that, so that we wouldn't be, you know, this is a large amount of money, so we used to put a portion of that away. Now we're using the reserve. So you're not seeing as much of a reversal of the expenditure this year as you saw last year. So in other words, in six months, because we don't pay it out until January and June, you can see a lower number here. But because we don't do that anymore, that number's just what the real balance is.
So the reserves are not reflected in these figures?
No.
Until they're a whole different.
But before the expenditure, the accrual would be in prior year expenses, and the negative we would see in this year, which lowered our regular other. I know it's a little complicated, well, it's a clowning matter. From two point seven to about two point. So there's really no difference at all, there's something sticking out of the spend. Do you have any questions? Any questions? Any further questions?
Part of what we try to do with this is, you know, Theresa Anthony and I go through this on a monthly basis, and we look at some big funding expenditures, and we wanna see if there's a big deviation. We do this mid-year, and it's kind of akin to you're going on a trip, and, you know, you don't look down to see if you're out of fuel until it's too late. You kind of monitor that, the gas gauge. So we're looking at these and comparing sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen. Are we within a percent or two? The revenues within two percent, the total expenditures are, you know, with less than a half of a percent. But if there's any categories where there's a big deviation, we try to drill down on that. But we normally capture it internally, because we do this on a monthly basis. For instance, the report we just went over last week, or maybe yesterday, was our substitute expense for the month of December. It was fifty percent higher than last year, and it's the highest expense in nine years. Why was it so high? Well, we had a lot of illnesses, December, you know, we had a lot of student illnesses, we had a lot of staff illnesses, and we also had a lot of training that took place. But we had an explanation for it. So that was a snapshot, December was a high month. But then when we looked at it from September to December, it was within two percent. So it was okay. And then Lee assured me that we're not going to have one in January where we spend, you know, nine hundred thousand. We look at this on a monthly basis, but we felt like it's important to share with the board each year in January. And as Theresa pointed out, especially with expenditures, you're gonna look, it's gonna be forty percent instead of fifty percent, because we're halfway through the school year, but the students and staff have only been here since September. So you'll see that get, that'll catch up considerably, especially when we have three payrolls in a month, then it jumps up. Thanks, Theresa.
Three point zero four, what did you?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're just gonna summarize kind of where we are. And even though you approve a budget calendar, the first slide we're gonna get to is that really the budget season. Budgeting is a twelve-month process, is really kind of what we wanna drive home. In fact, we're gonna show you something tonight in the first look. Again, even eighteen nineteen, we're jumping to nineteen twenty. And we kind of, we're always looking at, where are we? What does next year bring, and what does the future bring? And one of the promises we made to the board is, we're gonna also develop as part of this budget, a three to five-year going-forward plan. So, you know, we've got some things, you know, part of my report is the old Ed Koch, how are we doing? We're doing okay, but there are some, there are some storms on the horizon that we wanna let you know about, because we're thinking about, and, you know, in effect, they're gonna be brought into those discussions also. So really, again, twelve-month calendar, this is what you can deal, you deal with. We've already had the audit of last year, that occurred in October. We set your tax rate in August. We're doing end-of-year calculation of the fund balance in July. September, new year, new payrolls. We wanna encumber things, and we see very early on, how are we doing with payroll, how are we doing with BOSI's? And we can tell you, we're doing okay this year. We're okay, we're just, we're where we wanna be. There's no red flags we're throwing up to you at all. We're on our path we expected to be, and we'll even summarize that a little more. Mid-year report, January, we're also now rolling over salaries for the next year. All the employee groups, except for two groups that are kind of a little smaller in employee numbers, have contracts already in place for eighteen nineteen, so it makes that process a little more mechanical. But it's still a lot of checking. And there's things like leave replacements, there's all these moving pieces. That's what we're trying to do now. When we come to you in February to April, we're gonna be doing the budget in much more detail by program. And then May, budget vote. June, starts it again, final payroll. And then we're back to our, you know, normal cycle. This is just back to mid-year. To summarize, this year, how are we doing? On the revenue side, we expect about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand more in state aid than what we budgeted. The reason for that is primarily the locks program, the project. That's under the New York Save legislation. And the state provided, the year after you make expenditures for things like the locking systems, hardened doors, security cameras that are not purchased as part of the smart bond, the state will give you the money the year after. So that's primarily where that two hundred to two fifty is coming from. On the expense side, from what we see right now, and if, going forward, if the rest of the winter is like this week and not last week, we think we're gonna end up with about two million unspent, which, you know, may sound like a big number. It's one and a half percent of the budget, one hundred and thirty seven million. So just like in your own planning, you know, you, we wanna see that. And when we make estimates for budget, we'll tell you where our spending is. We're assuming everybody's coming back from job period. There's gotta be, you know, the state another year? Okay, fine, that's, we still get the breakage from that lower price issue. But really, on everything we do with budget, we try to err on the side of what would be the worst case. And some of them come through, and some of them don't. The net of it, we think at this point, two million. Trust me, at the end of the year, it's not gonna be two million, it's a number that's hopefully gonna be in that ballpark, but it will vary based on things that we still don't see on our radar screen. And we're just gonna keep, kind of, this constant back and forth. Look at that, what, you know, what do you expect to see, is it happening? We think though, right now, salaries are set, BOSI's is pretty well set. Unless you have new entrants coming in, we need the special programs. We think that we can see that. Now.
This is the two million, and I don't, you may not know this off the top of your head. And if you don't, I apologize. Is that, do you know if that's coming from somewhere specific, or is that just a little bit here, a little bit there?
It's primarily, again, our budget salary benefits mostly. So it's good news, it's in salary benefits.
It's not as if there's one specific area that you had budgeted for that you're not using.
More so, more so, that's in salary, salaries. We're seeing it there, and benefits, that's where it's coming from, primarily. And again, we're assuming, look, we see fifteen or twenty thousand dollars in supplies or textbooks, we just assume at this point, that's benefits. People back those, the way they purchase textbooks, basically, we're buying next year's textbooks with this year's money. Because, so the textbook committees are meeting now. So we're just assuming that's, even though it's sitting there, we see it, it's not gonna be there in May, June. The decisions will be made by the textbook committee, so. That's where we think it's gonna come from.
One second.
Yep.
Can you go back one?
Yeah.
So on that two million less spent, one thing contractually we'll know by January fifteenth is the number of retirees. If you budgeted for a certain number, it's almost double that right now. And they, you know, we still have a few more days for the final numbers to come in. But if it doubled, that's about a half a million dollars more. So for two million, like Anthony said, you know, that's where we are right now. But at the end of the year, he said, we may not be there. We'll know a lot more February sixth, when we do the formal budget workshops. And retirees are one of those that might have a big impact there.
Yes, because we plan on six.
So my question is, does this account for the tax service that we've received so far?
No. Actually, so the budget's the annual operations. We then prepare for things through our reserves. So any additional fund balance, if that two million does come to pass, or if the, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand of revenues comes to pass, that will go to the fund balance. Part of, we, there are two things we don't budget for. Capital reserve, which we hope to glean each year from some of the unspent money, as well as new tax resources. So, you know, it's kind of like, you can't get too excited to spend it, because these are big nuts. The community's already kind of bought into a plan to fund the capital reserve over the next nine years without taxes, you know, potential taxes, and also without indebtedness. So we kind of internally say, good, that two million shows up, we now can take care of these two things. So it's, yeah, the plan is where we kind of expect it to be. We also, as part of our looking forward, we wanna look back and, you know, we talked budget, obviously, but at the end of the day, what did we actually spend? And you can see there's a consistency in these areas. Salaries, about two million more a year. Benefits, we've had the benefit of that being a flat number, really over that four-year period. It's drops and some ups, but that has not been a budget problem for us. If all of a sudden now benefits are one and a half to two million more a year going forward, well, you can see that we're not gonna, you know, that's gonna be a burden we haven't had before, or at least in the last three or four years. Our indebtedness is flat, we're not taking on any more debt. Special education had a big, larger increase, and then through some cost containment measures, brings certain students back into district, so on. We've kind of leveled that off. Same with transportation, you can see, it was going up almost a half a million a year, but now we've kind of, might have controlled some of that. It will probably grow again, always the needs increase. B and G fairly flat. Technology primarily through equipment purchases. We showed most of that increase. And you gotta go down through things. And that will help us develop our long-range plan. On the revenue side, basically, I just looked at right here at state aid revenues. And the reason we broke them into these three categories is we wanted to highlight building aid. That'll go into the next slide. Transportation, the more, these are expense-driven. So as you spend more for busing, you actually, the state comes along and does provide transportation aid. BOSI's aid may be starting to flatten, because we've brought more technology programs in-house, and purchases, one-time purchases of technology equipment went through BOSI's, a lot of it. So we think that's gonna be kind of a flat area. And then foundation aid, that's really the state budget. We have seen some decent increases in foundation. All indications are next year's gonna be a tougher state aid year. That will probably be flat, we'll probably get some increases in some of the other areas, but we'll probably see something close to a nominal increase in foundation or no increase in foundation. The building aid, and I mentioned, we're, you know, we're putting together the eighteen nineteen budget, but we're, the warning sign we see on the horizon is nineteen twenty. Okay, when you have a building project, they give you aid over fifteen years for that project. There was a big building project that was done two thousand three to two thousand five, I guess.
Nineteen ninety nine and one two thousand.
Yeah.
The sixty five million and the eighteen million.
Okay, so that sixty five million dollar project, that aid on those projects is coming to an end, eighteen nineteen is slowly gonna tail off. Unfortunately, so that was the sixty five.
I'm sorry.
How much was that project, sixty five?
The sixty five million for nineteen ninety nine, and two thousand four was eighteen million.
Okay. So, and some of those could have been aid over twenty years if it was additioned, but mostly they were added over fifteen years. So you'll see, next year, we still have that building aid of four point one million that we can count on. But we now look at it nineteen twenty, and we say, okay, there's an immediate problem we're gonna have, that we're gonna have to plan for. And we are, we're just about, there are some, two things we're doing. One, we're not adding any debt. And two, all the capital projects that are now being approved will start trickling in additional building aid. You know, as we get approved, we approve the air handlers. It's not gonna be, it's no passio, it's not gonna make up that kind of number. So we are gonna have to, you know, as we put this budget together, every annual year, say, yeah, but let's think about next year. So we're gonna wanna keep a few of those, you know, a little bit more in our ability to deal with that drop-off in revenue, because our debt is not dropping off next year. Even though there's aid on those projects is, our debt will not drop off for like four more years, right? We're gonna see, basically, a twenty-year debt and a fifteen-year state aid. That was, now we're, this is the moment we're dealing with that.
Five additional years.
Yeah, four to five years, yeah.
These numbers don't reflect any of the projects that are upcoming?
The new ones, right.
Right.
So we'll be able to.
Those will grow.
They will grow.
Right.
But not much north of two million.
They're not gonna get back to, well, one, but they will grow.
And when you approve them, like tonight, we approved approximately six hundred thousand for an air handler project. The way the aid's gonna work, that's gonna be over fifteen years at our aid ratio, which I think is in the mid-fifties, to give you the exact. So start doing the math, fifty something percent of six hundred thousand is three hundred thousand, and that over fifteen years is twenty thousand. So it's that kind of little bit drips that are gonna add to that one point seven. But again, if we can get it up to two million, or a little note, we're still gonna have a two million drop in this revenue source. Foundation aid may help build some of it, but we're gonna have to also do some expenditure reductions and other things. And you can see that eventually the existing projects, there's another leg down three years out. That's, that's kind of one of the warning signs we give you. So as we're building eighteen nineteen, we'll be obviously having an eye on that.
One more question regarding the transportation state aid.
Sure.
In seventeen eighteen, is that based on sixteen seventeen usage? Is that how it's calculated?
Yes, it's one year later. And our aid ratio, I mean, we can provide more backups in these numbers, because it's what you spend and your aid ratio, which our aid ratio has been going up, so the state is giving us more of each dollar. And I, well, I can give you a little more backup on that, but. So partly it's that we spent a little more, and partly that we are getting reimbursed at a higher percentage. and partly that we are getting reimbursed at a higher percentage.
So, we still spent a lot of the prior year, but the increase was not as bad?
Probably kind of flattened out, I think, so when you go back to expenditures...
Right. So that it's seventy-three twelve instead of seventy-five thirteen, where it would have been probably...
Hopefully it will be.
If we kept up the same thing, it would have been about seventy-eight something, if we kept the same.
I just wanted to be sure. I don't know if you can pull up that, yeah, here we go.
Yeah, the one bit.
Okay. So, on the expenditure side, yes, our expenditures, oh, there we go. So our expenditures for transportation in sixteen seventeen did go down a little bit. So that must be an aid ratio, our aid ratio now, a little bit, that's...
So that puts into account the aid ratio there?
That's a, this is the expense side of it, but we showed the revenue on here.
So that's not net, that's up, that's expense before the aid?
Right. The one before is expense before, that's expense.
So now it would be subtracting one.
Yes, for the net cost, right, so... Oh, sorry. Thank you. So, you can see it's over fifty percent, seven point two, and generated three million seven fifty-five. But I'll, what I will do on the follow-up is I'll give you all the aid ratios.
Our, our, out of district tax payer is about four million, is my understanding?
Yes, that, that would be right, seven two, back to, uh... Have I lost control of this? I have a hard trouble with this thing. Uh, all right, yeah, so seven point three minus, uh, that's...
Minus three. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And Tris, revenue here is very chunky.
Sorry.
I like...
It's probably higher there.
I want the little kids, the yellow, the orange.
Yes.
What would they call it?
Saint Joseph's.
Saint Joseph's, that's right. Okay, sorry, people. Uh, but thank you for the reports, always, when you talk the numbers, always great, thank you. All right, so four point zero one. Four point zero one is the National Student Association, the NSBA conference, which I will say, uh, this is frequently, so speaking of the NSBA conference. Um, I'm not sure who is, uh, wants to go, I know, um, one, two, three, four, at least four are not going. Which kind of opens it up, because it's about eight thousand dollars in the budget, so, actually, let's see.
We also need to discuss the advocacy institute, if any of our advocacy committees would like to go February fourth to this. Similar things, okay.
Okay, so, um, I don't know who's, who's interested in going, it's the, it's in, uh, Texas, I think?
San Antonio.
Um, San Antonio. Um, what kills me about these conferences is they're great, they are great, they're, you receive a lot of information. Um, there's people from all over the country, and national one. Um, the registration fee alone, for each person who goes is nine hundred and fifteen dollars. It just, just seems way easier.
Yeah.
But, that's what we're doing. Uh, based upon the GSA and the registration and the hotels, typically what we do is we cap it at whatever the hotel rate is for the conference. The hotel rate for the conference is two hundred and thirty per night, that would be three nights, that's about, uh, approximately seven hundred dollars. Uh, nine fifteen for registration, airfare is running between three fifty and three eighty or so. Um, and the meals and essentials are approximately two hundred and forty for the three days, based upon the GSA. So, approximately twenty-two hundred per person who wants to go, if it's fully expensed.
How much was registered?
Uh, nine fifteen. Oh, no, that's, that's a...
Name of the speaker.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, uh, I guess, um...
Terry Bradshaw is gonna be there.
Terry Bradshaw's gonna be there. He's gonna come light on my PhD.
So I'm now with conflict with this speaker. So I'm not helping, so I'm not helping out with...
But I know Tris is not going, Paul's not going, Tommy, you said you weren't going, uh, I can't go. Uh, so, between Matt, Paul, and Amani...
How many, can we budget for?
We can budget for, for three, and three three, yeah, so...
If that's the only... Can we still three, do three if one person goes to the advocacy institute?
I don't know which is...
The advocacy institute, uh, I think it ought to plug with lunch here, I would say total would have been around eight hundred dollars. It's DC, so you're driving, there's no airfare, it's one night or two.
There wouldn't be, I think, winners got eight thousand or so.
I think one person should go to this, it's so important, so sorry.
Um, I don't know, Matt, can you, can you commit?
I, I, I know that, I know registration, registration is tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I need to just double check the dates one more time, I would like to go.
Also, do you mind, it's the last, it's the weekend of spring break?
The weekend, and yes.
And keep in mind that early registration is tomorrow, and there's already probably not room.
I'm not worried.
No, there's, there's...
I'll sleep in the outdoor, basically. I'll sleep in the basement, I guess. Oh, okay.
This is DC.
Um, I missed that.
Can you, can you?
All right, um...
I got it.
Uh, wait, hold on.
I, I, I will confirm by tomorrow, it's got to be certain dates, or...
Okay, so what we'll do is, what we'll do is, because we ordered like a vote on this, because it's not our, we're not voting on it.
We can vote on two.
No, I, no, we can't, we can't vote on it today, but what we'll do is, just so you guys can commit, you get, and get the ball rolling. So speaking is, we can, we'll, we'll commit, if there's a agreement, we'll vote on it at the next meeting. So we'll commit up to, up to three board members go. Um, with the registration, obviously, you guys have nothing to do about that. The GSA rates, um, for the meals and essentials and, um, hotel max at two thirty, which is the hotel rate for the conference. A lot of the hotels are less than that, there are a few of those. And airfare cap at three, if everybody's okay with that.
We shouldn't, uh, I don't think we should, we can cap the airfare, it's what we find, right?
Yeah, the air, well, the airfare's gonna be the same, I mean, the airfare is right now is between three, three hundred, cap at four hundred. The airfare, airfare is between three fifty and three eighty.
Yeah, well, is there a reason why this all should be included in a vote? Not to say...
Obviously, we're individual, it's what they were doing, GSA, so... It's what they ordered itself, we do. So I, I just, I just, I'm not, so, we've done it every year this way, so, yeah, we have to cap it.
Natural, unless you're gonna cap it.
Yeah, no, we did, well, because I'm, I'm not gonna argue with it, but I have the number of nights. The auditor wants us to vote on everything. That being said, that includes how much maximum we will spend. I'm trying to delineate how much each thing could possibly be, and say the max would be twenty-two hundred dollars. So, that's where we're going with this. So if we send three people, that's twenty-two hundred dollars apiece, and obviously clarify that it's two thirty per night for three nights.
What you, what you counted is over twenty-two hundred.
Nine fifty, well, eh, eh, yeah.
The only issue, the only real issue I see there is, is we're gonna wait to vote on this until February, whatever the first meeting, the next meeting, first with February.
No, it's twenty-two.
Airfare, very likely could increase over the first day.
Well, that's the, that's the point, the point we made today, to say, just so you guys can, you guys can...
Register.
Register, go, whatever.
Register, the district has to.
If we're on a, if we're on an agreement, we won't add here today if...
We'll make it official at the next meeting.
Correct, but, but we don't go ahead, we'll book it, and then rage.
Right, so this is it, Maxo, twenty-two, twenty-two hundred, twenty-two fifty-five is what I came up with, with, with everything that's delineated. The three of you, let Angela, Angela know tomorrow if you can go. Um, and just understand, if you forget to go, you can't get your money back. So, the nine hundred and fifteen can't get back, so if you made to go, you got to go. Um, and then we'll take, I'll have the auditor be sure the verdict is right, and we'll vote next month, uh, to pay it back. So right now, it's Amani, Paul, Amani...
I didn't stop, hold on, I never raised my hand, just briefly.
No, but as far as options, if you want to go, the four, the four of us are not going, so Amani, Paul...
So pretty possible go.
And, and Matt, just let Angela know as early as possible, then, sorry.
So, um, can we just register two for now, at the lower rate? And names to change, because I know in the past, we've been able to change name, who it is without going up to the air fee?
Just be careful.
Well...
What, yeah?
So if you want to register yourself, then it will be on your credit card, and you will submit that within your spending. If you want to register to me, let me know in the morning, I'll put on a purchase order, I will register, get you the number, you can make your hotel...
My question is, can we, can the district register two board members for now, at the lower rate? And then we'll figure out who's gonna go.
Only, no, only, only if you have two boarders committed, if you have two boarders don't go.
Right, you can always add a third later, right?
So again, tomorrow, tomorrow, call Angela and, and, and...
Good luck.
And they would go for this, okay? Let's begin the advocacy institute, the registration sweep, the advocacy institute is six hundred and ninety-one dollars. That's just the registration sweep.
So, challenge tonight, and there's no white in the car.
Room rate is two hundred and fifty, that's five hundred dollars.
No, four hundred and fifty.
Oh, yeah.
You go all on the same place, yeah. And it's an RIT. Two miles again, a hundred bucks. She'll be like twelve, twelve fifty for her.
Well, it's not...
I mean, I made my own, you know, last year, I think it's...
It's only worth it a lot.
It's twelve fifty plus food, and that's...
Oh, yeah, I, I'm hiding you, I'm a little more, who knows what that is. Well, I would, I would suggest this, if you want to...
Guys, just, I know, I know it's boring, they're wearing that costume. We just gotta get...
Uh, if, if, uh, if you have two people go to national, and one person go to advocacy, you don't have three?
Well, we have, we have three, no, it's...
But it's also actually voting, I don't think we're gonna do that.
No, I thought that was just...
No, that's kind of... So I would do then two go to the national, and, um, how much do you want to go to this one?
I'm not saying we, I actually, I'm not saying that, I think it should be open to people, although I should pay. I mean, I might have my own stuff, but I think somebody else about it, so maybe it goes off.
Why do we, why do we wait, instead of tomorrow, like who's going for this first? And then, once that's settled, then you can vote on this?
Yeah, the following...
Okay.
The following this is, this is... It's coming up before the next week, or after. Just wanted to... Very important, it's...
I don't think we're not gonna vote on it, so, I, I don't think we're not gonna get voted on. So, what can we discuss it here right now? Or we wait and see if we can vote this tomorrow? And we're just, we're getting ahead of ourselves, trying to figure all this out right now. Why don't we wait, maybe, maybe Paul, Amani, who's gonna go to national? We settle that, then we can figure out the next one. I mean, otherwise, we're just putting this all around our...
Okay, are you available for this one? If you...
I, I could be, but that's all, but that's all predicated on this.
You're not available to vote?
No.
So we'll have to decide that amongst us, but it's a matter of concept, we're voting on one person to do.
So, I would do, I would do two, so everybody's clear, two to national, and one to advocacy, or three to national, whichever one. Just budget-wise, it doesn't bust the whole budget, and we just took a little money to...
Right, so, at the end of the day, tomorrow, you might only get two people that can go to national.
So just exactly, and that's sort of my point.
So to clarify, let Angela know tomorrow, which two are gonna go to national? Okay, it's on the chain, and, right, all right? And then, um, let me know, if somebody, um, talks to the auditor about specifically, how much we, we, all right? Sounds good, thanks, and then, all right. All right, couple of participations, five points, zero one, call participation at the A school as a business, that... Does not mean it's up to Amani, but, can you put it something Amani? Um, this session will last no longer than thirty minutes, if you have any comments to make, you can step to A school as a business, please step up, podium, address your remarks to the board. Um, you'll have three minutes to make any such remarks. Um, if you, um, stand for social policy, twelve thirty, four hundred thirty employees, you're free to make any comments, you're not any specific or individual employee of the district. And again, if you are from a group of people, um, who's in our policy, um, please have one person to talk and speak, uh, if possible, for the board.
Come on.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, board members, superintendents, and current area presidents. My name is Fathali Mostar, and I'm the executive director of Yahay. It's a nonprofit advocacy group working to improve the sector education in ultra-earth bags and acidic schools, known as Ishivas. Um, some of you might know that many of these Ishivas focus overwhelmingly on, in some cases exclusively, on Judaic studies, failing to fulfill their legal obligation to provide an education that is substantially equivalent to public schools, as required by law. An education like, like that would need to include English, math, science, history, geography, music, art, physical education, health education, and more, as you know. It would also have to be taught throughout high school. We know many Ishivas in East Ramapo that do not provide such an education. Um, but there could be such Ishivas in this district as well. Furthermore, the state places the responsibility on you, the board, to empower the superintendent to ensure that all children will reside in the district, regardless of where, of where the school they attend to is located, that they receive, uh, basic education. This means that you have a great opportunity to not only have a positive impact on your own district by ensuring schools in this district meet state standards, but you also indirectly can lead schools in the nearby districts to raise their standards, as long as they receive children from this district. So I urge you to take, to make full use of that power. I have unfortunately little faith in the East Ramapo School District, um, that they would seek to ensure that the schools in their district meet state standards. I'm saying this after I've spoken there several times, without any results. So this is why I come before you, to plead that you insert your power for the good of those children, and for their future, as well as for the good of all Rockland and New York presidents. Thank you, Alvin.
Thank you very much. Yes, please, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much, um, my name is Jeff Van Lee. I am a nineteen eighty-three graduate of Suffolk High School, and very proud of that. I have been asked by the group of folks that are here today to talk on behalf of Mr. Joe Biddy. Um, about two weeks ago, I received a, a message and a call from Anthony Giardini. He is one of the parents of one of the athletes that runs for Mr. Biddy right now. And he told me that Mr. Biddy was told that he is not gonna be reinstated as the cross-country coach for next year. I was very upset about that, so let me give you a little bit of history and some of the reasons why. Um, when I was six months old, my father moved us from upstate New York down to Suffolk. And I am the youngest of five children. All of them were educated in the school system, and we're all very proud that we came from what used to be referred to as Ramapo School District. Um, when I was in eighth grade, I had the ability to be able to do an activity at school. That happened to be a sport, it was track. Ike McCormick was my track coach, and he realized that I had a little bit of talent and the ability to be able to run. At the same time, my father came to me and said, you're the youngest of five, there isn't money for you to go get a college education. You can go work with your brother who, um, started his own business painting houses in Suffolk. Not that that's not necessarily the greatest job on the planet, it certainly was very admirable, my brother did a great job running his business, but I wanted... My brother did a great job running his business, but I wanted something more. So I started to, to really put my, my efforts into track. Ike McCormick asked Mr. Biddy to come see me run McCown County. I knew that this legendary coach was going to come and watch me run. I ran my heart out. I ran in the sixth lane at Pearl River High School, and I won. At the end of the race, Mr. Biddy came up to me and he said, if you do everything that I tell you to do over the next four years, you could be somebody who gets a chance to go to college on a track scholarship. I've had several athletes be able to do that before in the past. That's all I needed to hear. So let me take you through my four years at Suffolk High School under Joe Biddy. And this is hard for me to say, and it's hard for me to talk about, because I don't want to appear as though this is braggadocious. But the man made me the runner and the individual that I am today. At Suffolk High School, I was an all-county athlete for ten different seasons in ten different teams. I was recognized in New York State several times with my performances at the New York State. By the time I got to my senior year, I went out to California to the Golden West Invitational, which at the time was considered the high school national championship. I ran my heart out. I set the New York State record for eight hundred meters. That was thirty-five years ago, but still stands today. Half of that was me, half of that was Joe Biddy. He was the one that inspired me, and he was the one that got me to where I needed to be. I received a full scholarship to the University of Notre Dame, and in nineteen eighty-six, I was an All-American there. I was not alone. I'll read you the names of some athletes that I know that went to college on a full-track scholarship under the guidance of Joe Biddy. Mark Connors went to Auburn University, graduated Suffolk High School in nineteen seventy-two. His father was the late Jack Connors, a music teacher at the high school, who taught all of my siblings, which were all very involved in music. Charlie Conda, nineteen seventy-three. Mike Hagan, nineteen seventy-four. Ron Barrera, nineteen seventy-six. Lince Rivera, nineteen eighty-one. Nancy Roosevelt, a teammate of mine. All of us, so there's eight of us, that went away to school on a track scholarship. Since I'd left Suffolk in nineteen eighty-three, the man has coached at least four or five fold of that. You all understand what the cost of college education is. Think of the millions of dollars that the man had dedicated his life to, to be able to have these kids, to be able to receive nationals paid for through the... This goes beyond scholarships and scholarship athletes. There were teammates that I had at Suffolk High School that had no right to be able to run as fast as they could. But Joe told them that he believed in them, and that we had goals, and that we were going to go achieve those goals. All of these individuals I'm in contact with, many of the ones that I ran with, they are all people that are extremely successful in business in their communities and are great family members. So let me take you through my last thirty years. In my last thirty years as, as a business professional, I was lucky enough to get my education paid for at Notre Dame. I graduated and I put in a twenty-two-year career at a company that's now referred to as Accenture. At my time at Accenture, I had an organization that I ran that had about twelve hundred people in it globally. I then moved to Johnson &amp; Johnson, where I had an organization where I had four thousand people globally, men and women from all different nations and from all different areas of the world. I had to go through some very difficult times in managing and dealing with folks. My leadership style came from Joe Biddy. He was my mentor. Doesn't, a day doesn't go by that when I'm working with these individuals, I don't think myself, what would Mr. Biddy do in this situation? He was my leader, he was my mentor, and he was my guy. I'm asking you on behalf of all of these folks, and I want you to really, really consider this. I've written an email message to Dr. Adams, and I very much appreciate your responding back. I was, I was very impressed. I know how busy you are and how many emails you get. I appreciate you sending me an email message back. Uh, Mr. Guccione, I also sent an email to, I have not heard back from him. But I'm asking this board really consider that Joe Biddy, after fifty years, being the winningest cross-country coach in New York State history, recognized in the Armory in New York City as one of the, the first inaugural inductions into the, into their Hall of Fame of coaches, give this guy an opportunity to be able to go out the way he wanted to, under his terms. I think it's important to a lot of the men and women that he's going to coach as they go forward, to help build the next set of leaders. I feel that I've greatly benefited from that, and I would like you to please consider the... So thank you for your time and your appreciation.
Hi, everybody. My name is Wendy Iadice, and I stand here today as a mother, educator, and community member. I started at Monta Ellis Elementary School in the second grade and continued all the way through Suffolk High School. I also teach in this community, East Ramapo, for the past twenty-five years proudly, very proudly. I am very invested in this community, as many of you are. I've grown up here, and now I raise my own family. Danny Iadice is my third child to come through the district, and I've written almost a dozen letters in the past praising the educators and support staff in helping me raise my three daughters. It's been a very, very valuable experience for my kids. Recently, I have been in to see Dr. Adams, and we have spoken about issues related to the Suffolk High School Girls Lacrosse Program. My goal, the goal of all those meetings was to improve the environment and create a better atmosphere for all our players. My issues were heard, and at this time, I'm still unsure about new procedures and protocols put into place, but I hope that the administration, the board, and the athletic staff realize that we were sincere in coming forward, and we did it in a very private and very personal way, so that reputations would be protected and rumors would not get started. In addition to concerns about the lacrosse program, issues were brought to their attention about the coaching staff. It would be absolutely shameful and wrong for me to publicly stand up here and announce to a room of strangers, board members, students, and faculty, personal and private obstacles that have occurred amongst the lacrosse community. Therefore, I choose not to. I will not disclose any information to protect the coaches and the players and the families. However, at this time, I ask the board to listen when we discuss a volunteer and what a volunteer means to me. A volunteer is someone that would be needed, who can offer unconditional support, and is able to be impartial under the most difficult of circumstances. Although I'm not even sure a volunteer is necessary at this time, we do need a volunteer if so, who is willing to support the player, no matter what travel team they are on, no matter what circumstances arise, and make that child feel comfortable as they step on the field. I stand here today for our current players, as well as my daughter, who will just be starting her journey. These girls have been through a tremendous strain over the last two years emotionally, and we, as their parents, must advocate for them during this level of distress. I did hope to have resolved these issues privately. The one thing I hope we all have in common here today is we all want the best for our players. So I ask you all in closing, that is, and I say that it's not only important to listen to others, but to prove that you are listening, and I thank you.
I have three children, uh, twins that are currently seniors that play lacrosse. My eldest daughter is a junior at Sui Potsdam. We've been very blessed with incredible educators, um, and I'm hoping that the lacrosse program will start to reflect, um, the experience that our educators have given my daughters. Listening to Mr. Biddy, it made me really sad, thinking about the experience my daughters had last year, um, and I'd like to share some experiences with the volunteer coach. One of my daughters, um, so I have twins that played one place on the field, one plays as a goalie. There were three goalies last year on the varsity team. The girls never knew who was going to be the starting goalie. They would know because, um, the volunteer coach would warm up the starting goalie. The other two goalies would be warmed up by the children of the volunteer coach, one being in first grade, one being in third grade at the time. For teenage girls who look up to and very much like the volunteer coach and, um, look at, at this person as a role model, it was so incredibly humiliating. For these, for a teenage girl to be warmed, knowing that you're being warmed up by a child in first grade, this is how you find out that you're not the starting goalie that day, not from the coaching staff. While, um, a little child was warming up the players, um, the other coaching, members of the coaching staff were on the sidelines speaking. So there were people, adults, to warm the players up. For whatever reason, this is how, um, things transpired. Because the girls were never told who was the starting goalie, um, and there was one senior, uh, one of the goalies was a senior, um, that young lady was never allowed to even... It was always given that she was never, never going to play, play because of her skills and was completely marginalized. Because there was a lot of stress between three teenage girls, keep in mind, we do have three teenage girls here, um, and being mother of three teenage girls, they sometimes are not nice. Instead of working together and building their skills together, they spent most of their time trying out to fight with each other because of lack of information. I understand you need a starting goalie, but, um, I think there's a better way to do things. I don't know. It certainly is not building, um, our students up. Again, listening to Mr. Biddy talk about what that is positive experience Mr. Biddy is and whether or not he's comes back or whatever, that has nothing to do with me. My two twins have also been coached by Mr. Biddy. They love, love him, absolutely adore the man. My husband who's fifty-six was coached by him. He adores the man. I really wish the same thing would happen in lacrosse. So thank you very much, everyone.
I'm Carly Lopez. I went to Suffolk High School. I am a graduate of the two thousand fifteen class, and I was a Suffolk Lacrosse player. I am here to speak on behalf of that volunteer and as well as the entire coaching staff. I just have a few points, um, that I want to bring up that come to mind automatically when I think of this volunteer. This volunteer raised everyone's lacrosse IQ immediately when she stepped onto our field at Suffolk High School. Not only did she play the game of women's lacrosse, she was fresh out of the college game of coaching and playing, and was also still working diligently in the recruiting world. As well, this volunteer taught us at the age of fifteen alongside our parents what it was like to have the utmost work ethic, work, work ethic, sorry, on and off the field, in the classroom, with your friends, anyone. This volunteer was constantly there for us when we walked onto the field, teaching us lacro, not only lacrosse, but she also had a motherly figure to all of us, whether it was a bad day at school, a bad grade, a fight with a friend, she was either there to, um, she was either there to raise you up and get you on the field and kind of get you out of your own head and just play the game of lacrosse, which was all an outlet for every single one of us. Lastly, this coaching staff gives blood, sweat, and tears for every single girl in this program when I was there. I absolutely loved every single coach that was there, and I have nothing bad to say about any of them, but this volunteer is a volunteer. She gives time away from her three kids and her job to be with us, to teach your children and us lacrosse and everything else about life. There's two more important things I'd like to say. This lacrosse, this volunteer is a reason girls beside me that are sitting with me, and many of your daughters are at the universities, amazing universities that they attend or in the process of attending, whether they are continuing their education and their lacrosse or just their education. She had some kind of say, some kind of weather on where you went and what you kept. Finally, this volunteer has taught us as young women what it, what it is to stand up for what we believe in, fighting for what we believe is right in our hearts, and to stand tall and with confidence. And as young women, that is something that we all need, and she really instilled that in every single one of us. So those are some of the reasons that come to mind as I'm standing here, not even reading what's on my phone. Thank you, and have a good one.
I have two stu, one student that, not one student, but I'm a teacher. And, uh...
Just, just to speed record...
My name is Anthony Magnelli. My daughter Toniya Magnelli graduated a few years ago. I have a daughter Isabella. Magnelli, that is sophomore in the high school, and... This volunteer coach... It's okay, stay there. Your sophomore year?
Yes.
Her sophomore year, and my daughter was in attack during the time, and whatever drill that Toniya was doing, recognized that she's an awesome defender, changed her position because it wasn't about the individual, it was about the team. And as a parent and as a former coach, I finally got that, let, last year at the end of my daughter's sophomore year at Boston University. I'm listening to the coach talk about every single senior graduating, and then it finally hit me. I said, we parents are so darn selfish. All we think about and all we care about is our daughter and how they could succeed and not about how the team could succeed. My daughter barely played her freshman year, big year, and I thought she should have started. And it finally hit me, it's not about my daughter. Obviously, we all think our daughters are the greatest, but the coach sees the bigger picture. This, this volunteer coach saw the big picture, continues to see the big picture. The head coach sees the big picture. It's a family. It's a lacrosse family. This volunteer coach did not coach their club team, their travel team in summertime. It didn't matter. She was there for each one of them. She continues to talk to my daughter. She continues to talk to the coach at the university because she cares. She followed up on my daughter and every single coach that was recruiting her during that time from her sophomore year, her junior year, and her senior year, and continues to follow up because she cares. Carly told you all the stuff about the lacrosse. I don't need to mention any of that. She cares. And the reason why I'm up here is because she saw my daughter and changed her position because she saw something in her, and continue to follow up with that. And we, as parents, care too much about our daughters, and we don't care about the bigger picture of the team. And that's part of the problem nowadays. And as a part of me, I almost thanks God that I'm not coaching anymore. This is all about individuals. My kid, my kid, my kid, my kid should be strong, my kid should be playing here. It's great that you think your kid's that great, but it's not about your kid, it's about the team. And it's awesome when I see them still sticking together, coming here. And you have some parents here as well, and it was great how we just tailgated, I think, every single game. And it's a shame that that tradition has not continued, and I believe it's because of selfishness. And our daughters, ma, since they were freshmen, eighth graders, played together on a club team, together with the head coach, together because it was a family. It wasn't about, are we playing the best team, how many goals we scored, it was about a team. It was about a family. Thank you for your...
I'm Kelsey, and I was a member of the women's lacrosse team, and I graduated in two thousand ten, and I was also a member of the coaching staff last year. And I just want to say that I did have the experience. And I just want to say that I did have the experience, like I had the supportive experience that they were talking about, and I went through, and I went through high school, and I went back to PBs to help out because I love this SGL community and meant so much to me, and now I'm seeing them here today. Have you seen the first graders that I used to watch? And they're, and they're coming here, and this is what I want to create, is these strong, independent females who are coming back, and they're being great role models for the community, and still volunteering to me and to all of them. And I'm so... I'm thankful to have her because, you know, I feel like this is the movement that's going on for me. Strong females coming up and are willing to stand for what people believe in, and be intelligent and get up, and not be intimidated by what's going on, and her breadth in her lacrosse community, I mean, I know not everyone knows lacrosse, but Jen Adams, who is like, I mean, the Michael Jordan, basically, she can have casual conversations with her, and this is the type of connections that she has and people that she can bounce ideas off of, we bring it back. And to her, that's a very small portion, because when she's sit and having casual conversations, it's, "All right, what can we do to make these kids better? Finish a game? All right. What, they did this well, they did this well, but how can we help this girl do this?" And she's a very intense person, so that can be, um, obviously misconstrued if you're stressed or in a difficult position at the time, and that's unfortunate, but I swear that from a personal perspective, she has the best heart, and she cares so much about this program. And also, I just want to say that I'm really proud of the girls for coming back and staying together because we love SGL. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, seeing that, I will close that portion of the meeting. I just appreciate everybody coming out and spitting their mind, and she, more importantly, for being respectful to the parties involved and those who may disagree or agree with you, that's really the most important thing. You know, choosing coaches is not something that's done at the foot of the hat. It's a pretty significant process, it's not just one individual, individual involved in it, multiple individuals in the district who are involved in choosing coaches and having so. But even though we don't communicate back and forth, we don't have discussions, don't have call participation, we do listen. I appreciate Jeff coming in, that was way back when, when I was in high school, but I appreciate that, and thank you for that. So, that one doesn't happen anymore. All right, motion to adjourn. Alvin, Teresa, hold affairs until I sing aye. Go, the judges, excellent.